Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the town council meeting, Monday, February 3rd, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Consider and Accept the Meeting Minutes of January 27th, 2025.
Point of order? Roll call, please.
Oh, thank you, El Presidente. Thank you. Roll call.
Thank you, Counselor Lazlo.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Shenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a quorum, moving on to, thank you, Counselor Marquetti. Moving on to Counsel, Agenda Item Three, Consider and Accept the Meeting Minutes of January 27th, 2025. Do I have a motion to postpone till next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Is the motion seconded and postponed? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to subcommittees, Department of Public Works.
Last week in the Agenda Items Number Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, has been all recommended favorably.
Moving on to Education Services, Counselor Montigny.
There was no meeting and there's no meeting scheduled.
General Government, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. There was no meeting since our last council meeting and there was no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you, Counsel. Planning Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. There was no meeting. Tentatively, there's one coming up. We're looking to set a date and stay tuned. Thank you.
Moving on to Protectors and Producers of Property, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. It was a meeting on the 22nd and no meeting was scheduled.
Moving on to Chairman's Announcements, I have no announcements tonight. I'd like to move on to Town Manager's Announcements.
Thank you. I'll make it quick because we're running late, but first off, I'd like to thank several local businesses to Southbridge Athletics, Charlie Diaz, our community cable director and other community members came together and purchased uniforms for the Southbridge basketball team, which was nice. Eighteen away red Nike shorts, eighteen home white shorts, eighteen hoodies, Nike jerseys for the high school varsity players with "Pioneers" written on the backs. And so just thank you to local businesses led by, with Charlie, Jose Machado of Canis Athletics, Jeremy Burdo, our good friend from next door at the Elm Center, Ace Fontaine of Ace's Chimney Solutions, and Mike Patra of Assured Plumbing and Heating Services. We really thank them for giving that to the athletic teams. Just a quick update, Rich and I have been on calls or team meetings with Mass DOT and they're doing a traffic and safety review of three intersections, potential intersections for always stops. They provided three locations that their data had showed potential for. We're going to ask that they review two of those. We've been in contact with the chief and traffic commission to put it on there, but it's always stop materials. We selected, again, two out of the three. The three of them were Main and Everett, Sales in South, and Mechanic and Optical Drive. We would not consider a four-way stop on Main and Everett Street, so, but Sales in South and Mechanic and Optical Drive seem like good options for them to do a further study and report back to us about that potential. On regards to the motion from last week of the vote-by-mail opt-out, the public hearing has been scheduled for February 24th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. That will be just prior to the town council meeting. It'll be here in the town hall. This is regards to just the town election and mailing out postcards for people to request ballots. The town clerk will have further information, but voters will still be able to contact the town clerk and request ballots. This is just simply us not sending out postcards. We did get an updated cost estimate on that, and the cost estimate just for the postage and the cards alone, just to let people know, is $21,278 out of town coffers. So we look forward to having that discussion at the public hearing. Follow-up to Counsel Marquetti's emails and some residents regarding the municipal electric aggregation plan. It hasn't launched. Program pricing began on about the January Reed. There's different dates on the January Reed, so every one will be different, but you should note the new rate in your, in your next electric bill. So whatever, so Reed rates that went from December to mid-January would be on the old rate. January to February would be on the new rate. Some numbers that they gave, there was 5,321 customers that they mailed cards to for this. 16% opted not to participate, which was about expected. We have enrolled in the program 3,639 residential customers, 585 commercial customers, and six industrial customers. So that's on that. If anybody has any questions, if Counsel Marquetti wants any follow-up, they will do a one-on-one call with you if you wish for any further information for clarification. Okay? And then my last item this evening is just in regards to a topic that was brought up by numerous people in regards to the homeless issues that we have in the community. As everyone is aware, we do have a Town Manager Substantive Abuse Council, which has a group of providers throughout the area, police, fire, and other agencies. We had a discussion at that level about future, having that as part of further discussions with that group. On Thursday evening, I had a meeting with the Board of Health Chair, Vice Chair, Director of Inspections, the Building Department Health Director, Police Chief and Fire Chief. It was in guys saw a property that we know has some issues, that there have been some talk about. Chief Wilson advised us at that time, just for the public, that they do conduct an annual count, and one had already been scheduled. That count for housing and homelessness, division staff from Open Sky will be conducting the tally, and that will be conducted this week. It's a point-in-time count in the community to assess those who may be living unsheltered. A police officer will be assigned to assess any, with them, to assess any of the known encampments that we have in the area and businesses, and will also go to remote areas in town that we know of. They will be offering services and providing outreach upon having that count completed and the results of that. I will follow up with the chief and we'll discuss other strategies to bring forward in regards to this issue. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
If I may, step back into Chairman's Announcements just for a quick second. I attended a retirement party for Billy Gibson. I would just like to thank the Town Manager, Joe Dow, the Town Hall employees that participated. Bill Gibson's a Southbridge guy. We gave him one of the good old boy hats, gave him a plaque, and his Town Manager gave him the proclamation, and we thank you, Jack. I just have to say, when someone retires after 22 years, I think that, you know, attending it as a town employee is important, and I thank those town employees that did attend. And I'd just like to wish Billy Gibson the best in retirement and hope to see her around the neighborhoods. Thank you. Moving on to Presentations, we do not have any presentations tonight. Moving on to Citizens Forum, are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda? Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Vote to Confirm the Town Manager's Appointment of Michael Laberge as a laborer, as recommended by the DPW Director, effective immediately, pending successful completion of medical screening and state ethics.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow. Discussion.
Unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is my recommendation to fill one of three vacancies for laborer MMAOs. We're very fortunate to have this individual come forward. It was highly recommended. As noted, he will start as a laborer, but has already started pursuing his CDL and as well as hoisting licenses, I believe. So he'd be a great addition to the town from all indications. He is a hard worker and we certainly welcome him to come aboard and join our DPW as we continue to build that department back up.
Any other discussion? Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. To the manager, how does this affect our staffing levels at the DPW?
It will help on the floor for our MMAOs, you know, maintenance man, equipment operators. We still have numerous vacancies that we have further on the agenda to staff, and so we still are recruiting additional laborers, maintenance men, equipment operators. It's a tough environment to try to get employees to come work for towns, not just ours, but other towns, so we welcome the fact that he wishes to come to the town of Southbridge.
I'd just like to comment on this gentleman. I've worked with him. He's not just a laborer. He can lay concrete as good as anybody. He has a lot of different talents in the construction field, and I just look at this as a catch. To have him in Southbridge is a positive. He's going to mesh in good with the guys that we have down there that like to work hard. He's a very hard worker, and I got to tell you, he brings some talents to the table because we pour a lot of sidewalks outside contractors coming in, but depending on how he's used, he has those talents. And again, we're adding another tool in the toolbox at the Department of Public Works. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I want to say, welcome. This is your town. I'm glad you stepped forward to serve your community. I know it's a job, but you know what the residents need, and good luck with your job. And his family, well-known, with a lot of activity for the town regardless. There's a lot of different activity to do for the town, so I'm glad you stepped forward. This is your town. You know what's wrong, do it right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Congratulations. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10. Would you like to come up to the podium so we could see who you are? No, me, them. Mike, go up to the microphone if you want and take a board.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for helping me get here, not just, you know, the town, but my family members as well, for all the people that have confidence in me. I won't let you down. This is just as much as a huge opportunity for me as, you know, it is to help out my community. So with that, I thank you very much.
Any question? Any questions by council? I have one question. Are you really as smart as your Uncle Gary?
I plead the fifth on that one.
I'm just looking at Russ, his dad, and him, just when he's young, probably look the same, more hair, brown.
Yeah, if I'm ever sick, you can come in and...
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Good luck, man.
Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 10. Vote to Transfer $35,000 from the Water Capital Reserve 610-450-58300-91250 to the Water Capital Facilities Improvement 610450-58300-25585 to fund the replacement of the HVAC system at the water treatment plant, ABW Water.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinia. Counselor Shinia.
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Any discussion on this? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 11, Vote to Award a Contract to SS Service Corp. in the Amount of $49,766.31 to replace the replacement of the HVAC system at the water treatment plant. Project to be paid from the Water Capital Facilities Improvement Account 610450-58300-52585 and allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Shinia.
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Any discussion? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was just wondering why the difference in the cost and how much money we're moving over.
The first transfer was moving over to the $35,000. That account had $20,000 in it for facility appointment, so we're putting that at 55 so that there's enough money in case there's any other facility improvements that have to go on or any change. The difference in the amounts, are you talking about the difference in the bids itself?
Yeah, you're moving 35, but the cost is 49.7.
Yeah, so the count started at 20, so I'm moving 35 just to have a little bit of buffer in case there is a contingency or if there's other facility improvements that we had to look at, but that's the only reason why.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 12, Vote to Accept a Proposal from McClure Engineering in the Amount of $26,560 to be paid from Systems' Capital Account 610450-58300-25580 for engineering services related to the design and bidding of the water distribution improvements on Main Street, Chestnut Street to Everett, and allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Shinia.
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I've heard of all kinds of different capital accounts, but you could familiarize me with what the system capital account is.
That is an account that's within the enterprise fund, so that's an amount that we allocate every year for any projects that we may want to design. So it's within the existing budget.
It's within the budget, all right. And then if somebody comes and does something with regard to the water or the sewer in front of my house, I'm charged a betterment fee. Are they going to be charged a betterment here, or does that not, does that not apply to this situation?
The only time we charge betterments is if we don't have the line in that area and that we would, this is a replacement of an existing line. So there is no betterment on that.
All right.
The betterment would be, i.e., an area that has Pleasant Street, say. There's a section of Pleasant Street that goes up to the airport. If we were to put a line in, we may charge a betterment along that line for the improvements to the system. But this is a replacement of an existing system.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. 13, Vote to Adopt the Town Manager's Proposed Organizational Structure of the Department of Public Works, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Shinia.
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Unanimous Subcommittee, any discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed?
I just had a question.
What's that?
I had a question.
Okay. Let's go back to discussion. Go ahead.
I did watch the meeting, and I just had a question on the reporting for the project manager and the deputy director are reporting to the director and sort of just getting a sense, because I don't, I don't recall, I know we voted on the deputy director job description previously, but just sort of a little bit of the difference between those two positions?
As far as what a deputy director would be and a project manager?
Yeah, and sort of like, does the project manager report to the deputy director or just directly to the director?
You want me to answer?
I'm going to say it's going to be both, dependent on project specifics, you know, because we have a number of projects that go on, but Counsel Lazlo.
I think what you have to look at, what we're trying to do there, is the director is the boss of the whole department. The deputy director is the director when the director is not in the house. So in other words, we've had a revolving door of people retiring. Who fills the position? Well, this guy was a, a different position, this was an engineer. So what happens with this is, once somebody moves on from the director's position, you have a deputy director to consider that has all of the working parts of the director. But as far as the project manager, you'll see a project manager on the project, boots on the ground, and he will answer to the director, but if the deputy director is in that day, and say hypothetically, the director's not there, he takes the place of it. So technically, he would be answering to both on different intervals. But it's an organizational chart where we don't have a revolving door at the top like we ran into four years ago, three years ago.
I had another question, just on the engineering piece, and I appreciate, I'd like that there is an expectation that there's a bachelor's degree in engineering, business administration, or project management. I'm wondering if maybe incorporating some kind of advancement, so we actually develop the engineering piece? I know that that has been very difficult to recruit someone, but maybe thinking about including something in that job description where further education or further credentials in engineering as that person develops in the department. Just a thought.
If I may. I don't know if I would put it directly in the job description. I think we'd have to take individually what their specialty would be. So if somebody's very strong in project management, you know, evidently, we're not going to send them to engineering school for that piece, but if they do have basic engineering, they want further development, we do that with all our employees for further development, is develop an action plan to say, what growth can you have? Where do you see yourself in the development in town? You know, because obviously, we have to start developing succession planning as well. So we look at that individually with each department. We do that, you know, with Michelle downstairs, with Peg downstairs. What are your goals? Where do you want to go? How can we give you support for that? So we would do the same thing with these positions.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14, Vote to Adopt the Job Description of the Department of Public Works Project Manager A7.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow. Counselor Shinia.
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was reading over the recommended minimum qualifications. Do you think that you're going to be able to get somebody with an engineering degree for this, a bachelor's of engineering for this type of position?
For the project manager?
Yeah.
Well, you know, we could hope, you know? That's our goal. We have to see what's up there, but if somebody had an engineering background, great, but there's also individuals that have strong road construction and project management, not necessarily engineering, so that would maybe the fit, and we're trying to, we're trying to be broad enough to recruit, but make sure that we're recruiting the right individuals. So it's tough to get engineers, but I did have a conversation with somebody the other night that was in the office that may be looking for a deputy director's job, that's a city engineer in another town, you know? When you bring it up, that, you know, a deputy director's position with a strong engineering, with some background with Mass DOT, that may be a position for that. And then you marry that with a strong project manager person that's been out on the roads. Actually, you know, we look at that project manager person as the one that's out there on the jobs, overseeing the jobs, making sure that they're coordinating the construction and the contractors on the day-to-day basis. So, yeah, we're going to look for the very best candidate.
Yes, I've always advocated that we needed a project manager. I think it's a good idea. We've had a lot of road projects that have had a lot of problems, or we end up having to pay an engineering company to do the work, and then sometimes they don't even show up to do the work. So I think it's a great idea. I was just wondering, I didn't quite catch what the salary range was in the meeting.
The A7 range is, it's so small, I got to bring it up. It's 93.6 to 105.
All right, thank you.
And not necessarily, you know, we want project managers too. Hopefully, they have a broad enough scope for buildings and maintenance as well, so we could have a combination of those talented individuals out there, hopefully that we can recruit.
All right, thank you.
I think the thing that drives this organizational chart are past problems, and I think Town Manager was chairman of the council back and not too long ago, where we had parking lots being paved in rain, which is against the regulations on paving, and we didn't have a project manager or boots on the ground. I think we lived that Central Street parking lot and Main Street. So I think moving forward, what's driving this design is the problems that we've experienced as a community, and I think this really satisfies it. As far as an engineer, it's nice to have, but we have engineering in a lot of these jobs, and we delayed this organizational chart to try and get the engineer, and nobody bid on it at all. So you're better off moving forward, if we catch somebody with engineering background, we'll scope it up.
Well, if I could just, one last thing before George, before George comes in, it's like, if this is going to lead to more roads getting fixed in town, then I think a lot of people are all for it, because I hear a lot of it that roads just are not, we've fixed a few roads, but people want their roads fixed, they want their potholes fixed, so it'd be a good idea. If this is going to lead to that, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Well, I think, it's already leading to that, if I may, it's already leading to that, and that's why we need a project manager, because we have so many projects that are on the books that it's very difficult to plan for the future. So we're so entrenched on the low, on the day-to-day road getting done, we also need that capacity to plan for the future, and how does that fit into budgets and, and long-range planning? So that's putting that vision together.
Thank you.
Counselor.
I think part of the discussion that we had the other night, the DPW, was that as we talked about the qualifications, the DPW Director said, where somebody might have strength in this pile and weakness in this pile, what he's, his concept is to be a team player so they can all work together to get what's best for the community. And he stressed the importance of being a team player from the top all the way down. So I think that's an important aspect that the DPW brought forward that night to show that we might have somebody that's strong here, but weak there, but as a team, they can work together and make that point strong.
And again, if I may, thank Rich Benoit for his input in the design and Town Manager, because the experiences that we've experienced in the past couple of years, we've turned it around, a lot of roads are getting done, and a lot are on the books now. Boston Gas looks at it, National, excuse me, National Grid looks at us a little different now, thanks to our director and how the Town Manager handles this stuff. So I think we're heading in the right direction. We just got to put these pieces together. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15, Vote to Adopt the Job Description of the Administrative Assistant I, Department of Public Works, S8.
So moved.
Second.
This is a motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow. Counselor Shinia.
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16, Vote to Award a Three-Year Townwide Maintenance Contract to FM Generator in the Amount of $47,297.77 for annual presentation, maintenance, preventative maintenance and testing of all towns' 20 emergency generators. Costs to be allocated annually between the respective departments. Operating budgets and allow Town Manager to sign all related documents.
Oh.
Second.
The motion is second. Counselor Shinia.
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Discussion? Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. When you say maintenance, just to check, make sure they're running, or if there's anything needed, the price included to?
This is for them to do, the preventive maintenance, annual testing. Anything additional, we would have to have them bill out. That's how we do it on HVACs as well. This is the preventive maintenance schedule to make sure that they are serviced, oil's changed, that they're running load test and all that.
So the oil change included?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sometimes I look at some of these generators and I wonder why we even have them. There's one on South Street. I don't know what that's doing there. I don't think it's ever been in operation. Maybe it's there for a purpose, but I just don't know what it is.
So that generator services any, if there's a power outage, it's a pump station, correct? So it's a, so that generator is supposed to be inside, but because of the age of the old one, we're looking at, we've talked about that, to have that looked at, that's a sewer pump station, correct? Sewer pump station. So with our new operator, we're going to look at different designs. To Rich's credit, Ty and Bond wanted substantial amounts of money to try to design, to put a generator in. We have conversations, and we believe that with Jacobs and the new operator, that they may be able to design something that will be very, not costly. The only reason you know there's a generator there is because that's a temporary generator. We actually bought that generator, so, because we were paying so much for leasing one, that we purchased that one. So that one, once we do the final change over for a permanent generator, that one would go into our inventory for any other locations that may need portable generators. So it serves a purpose.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17, Discuss. Moving on to seventeen, discuss credible evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing held February third, two thousand twenty-five, and entertain a motion to deem whether said dog owned and/or kept by Julio Guzman of Southridge, Massachusetts, is a nuisance or dangerous to the community.
Mr. Chair, point of order, maybe?
Point of order.
Can this particular item, can it, we act on as a table?
Um, I, no, I think you have to make a determination. You can find no evidence and deem it neither a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog and just deem the complaint dismissed.
Okay. So I could make a motion at this point in time, deem the dog not a nuisance?
To dismiss it?
If you want to dismiss the charges, then you make a motion to dismiss. If you want to make a motion that it's a nuisance, you make a motion it's nuisance. If you want to make it a motion it's a dangerous dog, then we'll vote on a dangerous dog.
I make a motion to dismiss.
Motion to dismiss. Is there a second?
Second.
Secondary discussion. Counselor?
I'd be against dismissing this matter. I think there is some credible evidence that the dogs, at least one, the dog was aggressive. Now, dogs are dogs, and when let loose, they're going to, you know, they can be unpredictable. They were within a fenced yard, I understand that. Nevertheless, you know, one dog did, did, does seem to be acted, acted aggressively, and if you look at the definition of a, of a dangerous dog, I'll just read that definition. Dangerous dog shall mean a dog that either, one, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. So I think the key term there is, does a dog, did the shell, did the dog act without justification? There was no evidence brought before the council that this attack was provoked by, by either the complainant or, or the, or the dog, or the small dog itself. The testimony was that the dog came racing around to the front of the building and aggressively attacked the small dog. So given that it does, in my view, meet the dog, meet the definition, the testimony and the evidence does meet the definition of a dangerous dog, I would vote against dismissing the matter at this time.
Counselor Rivas.
I would tend to agree with Counselor Kelly, and, and again, the evidence that was presented by the, the neighbor that came in, that there is fear that this will happen again, and the evidence presented where the complainant talked about previous instances where the dog had attacked or tried to attack the, the other animals, and, you know, she was able to mitigate that, those attacks. And so I think because they haven't seen the dog doesn't mean that there isn't a threat that exists there. So I would, I would also vote against a dismissal.
Any other discussion? Counselor Shinia.
The issue, the reason for, I have asked for dismissal is the fact that prior to this incident, there was nothing, nothing happened. After the incident, there's been no continual problems. In my family, we experienced a dog attack twice. My sister-in-law got bit in the face and sustained serious injuries, and my brother got bit in the face and sustained serious injuries. And with my brother, I remember the veterinarian telling us, don't blame the dog. So since there's been no added problems after or before, that's, that's the reason that I am voting the way I am. What's the concerning part of the thing is this happened in September, and we're hearing it now in February, and it's taken a long time. So that long time, there has been no incident. So that's, that's my view.
I'd just like to comment, it's kind of a personal issue. I wear a scar on my face here. I want you to know I beat the dog, though, it was a pit bull. He left horizontal, not me. But the point is, once you, a dog attacks, and as Counselor Kelly said, attacks a domestic animal. I mean, it, to me, I agree, it's a dangerous dog. So for myself, I'm saying, nothing happened, but then the witnesses are saying that we haven't seen the dog out of the house, he keeps it in the house all the time. So you're not going to have another incident, but if the dog gets out, do you want to take that chance? What if the next one's a child? What if it's a human? You don't know. So I think we have to really, you know, think about this one. I'm going to be voting no on the motion, but I think it's a dangerous dog. Any other discussion? If no further discussion, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I, all my life, I have dog. I have a German shepherd, and they're not a friendly, they're watchdog, they're guard dog. When a dog doesn't attack a human or child, when, especially when he's attacking another dog, different owner, different person was able to hold him, it didn't react, it didn't bite. I'm sorry for, you know, the small dog, you know, get injured and pass away, but that dog, he have no history of any other incidents, or didn't attack any. Usually, when dog attacking another dog, you try to hold him, especially if you're not the owner, he will attack you too. So as, as she said, she hauled him up, and he didn't react, he didn't do anything. And this is a dog. I mean, this is, it's a natural. I mean, that's his job, protect his home. And again, I wasn't there, but I feel like some dog doing their job. I don't think this should be harm. The owner, he paid the bill, he get the fine. Hopefully, he learned from the first one, and he need to protect his dog, because his dog's doing his job, he's the owner. So if he left him home, make sure his kids or whatever was there not to bring him out when somebody out in the yard. I'm going to vote yes on the motion. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
I just like to point out that if we find this dog dangerous, it doesn't mean that we have to take the, you know, the most extreme measure. We can, there are a variety of, there are a variety of remedies that are laid out in the KP Law Menu, memo that we saw, we had in our package. So, but the fact of the matter is, just by looking at the definition of a dangerous dog, this dog was not provoked in any way, and this dog attacked a small, much smaller animal. Now, look, I, I agree with Counselor Dow in that the, that dogs have a nature, and my little dog, I have a little, I have a little Yorkshire terrier, and she is a terror when she gets out in the backyard to any rodent, or bird, or anything else in the, that may be in the yard. She sees a rabbit, and she'll go right after it. That's in nature. Now, I mean, maybe this dog looked at that small dog and said, well, that, that's a rabbit, that's not a dog, and went right after it. I, that's, that may be the fact, but if you look at the definition of what a dangerous dog is here, it is clear that this, there was no provocation, and based on the evidence that was, was presented at the hearing. So I think as, if we're going to be responsible here, we need to find that this dog is dangerous, and then we need to come up with some kind of remedy to, to ensure that the dog does not attack in that manner again.
Counselor Rivas.
Just to add to that, I think in previous hearings, it's concerning to me that the owner of the dog wasn't present, didn't provide any mitigation or any other, you know, ideas of what they're going to do. These are all apartments that are close to each other, and people live together. And again, you know, we've had previous hearings where the owners come in, and they said, we've done this, we fenced this area, where we've, you know, we've done these different, these different actions in order to make sure that this doesn't happen again. I don't see that here, and that is a huge concern. And again, I do think that it meets the definition of a dangerous dog. It doesn't mean that we have to recommend that the dog be put down, but I do think that we need some reassurance or some measures that the owner is going to do to make sure that this doesn't happen to another animal, or also to a child in that neighborhood.
Go ahead, Counselor Montag.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, probably the Town Manager. So there's no option here to say it needs new owners, right? Because it clearly seems like the owners, based on all the stories, okay, don't deserve to have the dog, but other than that, I don't see what we could do as a dangerous dog, except say that needs to stay in the house. Out of all the options that I see, the only thing that makes sense would be to say it needs to be confined to the house. But then, to the chairman's point, what if it gets loose anyway on accident? So, I mean, I'm ready to abstain on this one, because this is just bizarre, but thank you.
I think the point of it, I do agree with Counselor Dow, when a dog is in the house, it's protecting its property. When it's in, you know, in its environment, it protects its property. I get it. But this wasn't that, protecting the property. This was that the dog took off after the other one, took its head off. And I think the def, legal definition that Counselor Kelly is reading is what's making up my mind. It's not my personal feeling, it's that, it's, it's the interpretation of what the law actually says. It is a dangerous dog. What concerns me is, did our dog officer read the law?
No, I think that's unfair.
That's unfair?
Yeah.
She gets paid to do her job, and that's why, you know, for me, I mean, we're going to have a discussion on it, but if, if, if Counselor Kelly's reading the law, and there is a law on the books, that's usually what we live by, I thought. So we will, we'll work on it, but tonight, I'm going to vote for a dangerous dog. Counselor Dow, Counselor Dow.
If you want to continue, Mike.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Dow. Just, my understanding, if we were to deem it dangerous, and it violated, let's say, the confinement choice, then it would be able to be brought to a pound, not to be euthanized, but to find new owners. Is that correct, if it violates the order?
But what I'm trying to say is, you, you're talking about punishment. I'm not talking about punishment. Determination is what we're doing here, not punishment. Whatever the punishment is, that's to be discussed, but what we're saying is, is it a dangerous dog? Is it a nuisance? Or dismiss? Those are three choices.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, but I thought we had to choose one of the options under dangerous dog, if we choose it as a dangerous dog.
If I may, your motion is motion to dismiss.
Correct.
That's the only thing you should be talking about, whether you dismiss it or not. And if you don't dismiss, then what the next action is?
Very good.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I do not agree with you about what you said about the animal dogs. She, that's her job. I think she's, she went to school for that, she take courses, I'm sure she know the law. I knew, I know she study the, you know, what happened there at that time. What I heard tonight, different stories. I don't know if anybody catch that, it's on camera. One, one minute, she wasn't there with the dog, she let him out, she know nobody there, she went in, and then she hear screaming, she run to the back, another dog attacking. Anyway, I don't want to get in detail, but it's a dog. You know, you can't harm a dog. She did do her job, give him a fine, give him, give him five hundred dollar, I believe, what I read. It's on record. My, what make me feel comfortable, any dog will be attacking another dog, and any other person other than the owner come near it, it will be bit or get attacked by the dog. That dog, it didn't attack, she grab him. He's friendly, he's not, I mean, listen, me, I will defend the dog all the time, because that's, that's a natural. You gotta, you gotta face, when, when you live in a building, and you know it's a bigger dog, and you have two, three dogs running in the yard, you're always going to hope nothing happened, but you're always going to assume something is going to run to those dogs. It's not fair to look at it on one side, this dog run and attack a lot of dog, it's not about the size, about, maybe he's playing with it, he think it's a toy. How do you, how do we know he was so aggressive if he, he didn't attack any children there, any, any other person? I, I think the dog is doing his job, I don't think the animal control didn't do her job, I think she did it well, and I'm proud of her. She did her job, she, she, she make him pay five hundred dollar, that's not a small amount. She didn't give him hundred dollar or two hundred dollar. Ball dog wasn't on a leash. Ball dog was running in the yard. You can't blame one, not the other. Thank you.
Any other, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We've heard a lot tonight about why the dog may or may not have acted out the way it did. The problem is, is that we have an obligation to the town through the legislation to determine whether or not what happened was in fact a dangerous issue or not. The legislation is clear, in my mind, that what happened was a dangerous act, and therefore, I believe the motion to dismiss is not the prudent way for us to go as a council, and I will vote against that motion tonight.
Any further discussion on the motion in front of us, before I ask the citizen?
Mr. Chair, maybe through you to Counselor Kelly. I have a problem deeming the dog a dangerous dog with just one incident that happened. I wouldn't have so much of a problem deeming the dog a nuisance with, with stipulations put forward on that dog, but I, to deem the dog a dangerous dog, I understand what the, the law reads as far as how we get there, but if you read through the, the letters and the copy of the paperwork that were given by Town Manager, it's almost inhumane to have a dog follow those guidance that set forth in the paperwork that we have. So, I mean, I wouldn't object so much if we declared the dog a nuisance dog, but dangerous dog, I have reservations because of the only one time that it's happened. Thank you. I don't know, you could answer?
What's in front of us is, we're not talking about nuisance. The motion in front of us is to dismiss, and if your opinion is it's a nuisance, okay. This has to fail for us, for somebody to make a motion that it's a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog. So let's concentrate on what's in front of us, and let's have Mr. Buckston, would you like to say your name and address?
Yes, I'll keep it quick. This may help the counseling somewhat. If for no other reason, for the documentation and the record, that this dog attacked and killed another dog, if you dismiss, Mr. Kelly spent some time as a district attorney, and I'm sure you have a person with a rap sheet in front of them, everyone, every rap sheet that's marked dismissed is dismissed, can't be brought up. Just for the sake of documenting this incident, I think I would recommend that you do not take the step of dismissing, you go ahead and determine it a nuisance, just to document the incident. Thank you.
Any further vote on the motion in front of us? If not, roll call.
Counselor Lozal.
No.
Counselor Montigny.
No.
Counselor Shinier.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
No.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
No.
Counselor Marketti.
No.
Counselor Ortiz.
Yes.
Counselor Rivas.
No.
Six, no.
Second motion fails. Counselor Kelly, your motion?
I, I, I do, Mr. Chairman, through you, I would move that based on the facts seduced at the public hearing, which would include the fact that it appears that the dog ran around the, the back, from the back of the house, and attacked a much smaller dog with a much smaller dog without provocation, that we find that the dog complained of is a danger, dangerous dog.
There's a motion by Kelly, seconded by Marquetti, discussion on dangerous dog.
Thank you, Counsel Dow. What do you mean by dangerous dog? Can you specific what you try and, the, the action you're gonna take against that dog when you say dangerous dog, please?
Well, this is, that's, I think that's the subject of a second motion, uh, as to what we're actually gonna do, uh, but that, but in order to get there, I think we have to either find, we have to find that the dog is dangerous. And the danger, and I'm just going by the definition provided to us, it's in the statute, and, and also in our, in our bylaws, um, that a dog that either one, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. And in this particular case, I would go back to the first clause of that and say that the dog, without justification, attacked a domestic animal causing death, which makes it a danger.
Counselor, um, Montigny brought up the punishment theory, and that's why, do we determine that it's dangerous?
You have to determine if it's a nuisance or dangerous first, and then determine what you're doing.
So, okay, now, we're gonna go, is it, what's on, what's on the, uh, motion is, it's a dangerous dog, it's got a second, any more discussion on the dangerous dog motion? If not, roll call.
Counselor Montigny.
No.
Counselor Shenier.
No.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
No.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
No.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Counselor Lozo.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion passes. Now we discuss the punishment?
There are only the remedies that are outlined in KP Law, the fact that it was declared a dangerous dog, you cannot alter these, it has to be specific to one of these remedies. So you can't say, yes, do this, but, it has to be one of these remedies, um, as outlined in this, um, KP Law memo.
One, uh, just a point of order on that, um, I believe it's one or more of the...
One or more, right. But you can't deviate from the language in the specific remedy.
Yes.
That's my point. You can do one or more, but it cannot deviate or add to, or lessen what is in this requirement.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to state, the final paragraph in our packet here says, this, this would be, in theory, a violation of whatever punishment may be set forth in the next potential vote. It says, under section H, if an owner or keeper of a dog is found in violation of an order issued under this section, the dog shall be subject to seizure and impoundment by law enforcement or animal control officer. If the keeper of the dog is in violation, all reasonable effort shall be made by the seizing authority to notify the owner of the dog of such seizure. Upon receiving the notice, they have seven days to petition, I'm skipping forward here, because it says the owner or keeper shall be ordered to immediately surrender to the licensing authority the license and tags in the person's possession, if any, and the owner or keeper shall be prohibited from licensing a dog within the Commonwealth for five years. So, to my understanding is, whatever this council sets as a punishment for the dangerous dog that they just appointed, then if the, if it, if it's violated, then the owner must surrender the dog to a pound, it's not to be euthanized at the pound, and then the owner does not have a dog for five years. Uh, if, if I'm understanding that correctly.
They can't, not any dog?
No dogs.
No dogs.
No dogs, correct. I'm comfortable with that being the penalty, I'm just also erring on the side of, like Chairman Lozo brought up earlier, if you do choose to, let's say, confine the dog indoors, needs to use the bathroom indoors from now on, with puppy pads and things like that, and if it ever comes outside, it's a violation, what if it goes and rips a child's head off instead of a small chihuahua? So I'm torn, but I'm satisfied where if this is violated, that they, the dog will be sent to a pound and have new owners, and this other person can't have a dog, because clearly, that house was instigating by that story, and not the dog's fault, it's the, the owner. So I'm down for, for voting some, uh, confinement personally. Thank you.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you. So our options are listed, um, in the packet, um, one of which is that the dog be humanely restrained, but not chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including a tree, post, or building. I would be in favor of something of that nature. I could also be persuaded that, um, number, item number three might be appropriate. Um, that, that when it, now, item number three states that when removed from the premises of the owner or keeper, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. My, you know, I, 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 I say I can be, I may be persuaded on that one, but I think that may be a little extreme for this case. I think item number one, uh, is probably the, the, uh, the best solution here, which would be that the dog be humanely restrained, but not chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including a tree, post, or building. Just, I believe that does not mean they have to keep the dog inside, they can, they bring the dog out, they can bring the dog out for a walk. As long as the dog is, is restrained, and that would mean a, a tether, a leash, or something, that the, that a human had control over.
Discussion, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, what, what would you think of requiring them to have insurance? It's clearly, if this dog injures somebody, you wanna make sure that, that anything that happens, that the person that gets attacked is, is, uh, taken care of.
No, you can do that.
Yeah, we can, so item...
Are we gonna have people yelling from the audience? If they wanna come up, let them come up.
So, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So item number four on that list, um, is that the owner or keeper provide documented proof of no less than $100,000 insurance for claims resulting from intentional or unintentional acts of the dog, or of reasonable efforts to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued. I, I do believe that that's probably reasonable.
What is your flavor?
So, I would, um, I'll, I'll put forth a motion, um, that, uh, that we order, that the town council orders that the dog be humanely restrained, but not chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including a tree, post, or building, and that the owner or keeper provide a doc- documented proof of no less than $100,000 insurance for claims resulting from intentional or unintentional acts of the dog, or of reasonable efforts to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued.
Second. Motion by Kelly, seconded by Marquetti. Just any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Counselor Shenier.
No.
Counselor Dow.
No.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
No.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Counselor Lozo.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
And Counselor Shenier.
You skipped me.
Oh, sorry.
You skipped me.
Motion passes.
She's kidding. You skipped me.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Moving on to Counsel's forum, Counsel Marquetti.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Counsel Daniel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to thank the town manager for starting action on the homelessness and, and housing problems in town, I appreciate that very much. That's all I have, otherwise, thank you.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I just wanna say, uh, I'm glad I attend Mr. Gibson's retirement party. I wanna say thank you, uh, for the town manager, and all the people make it happen, Counsel Lozo, uh, some of the employee, and I wanna say something, uh, I'm not Pacific saying all of them, but I hope every person will learn from Mr. Gibson. Uh, he's amazing guy, uh, he's beyond his job, uh, no matter what I say is not enough, 1990, no, 2007, I was working in, uh, my station in 169, and I wanna open once Christmas Eve, night, weekend, he came out at night on a weekend just to prove it, to open, uh, out, uh, town hours. Uh, he's always beyond, uh, he's a kinda person. I hope, uh, all the employee, uh, will learn from that gentleman, uh, and will, will move the way he move and the way he act to help the residents in Town of South Beach. Thank you.
Counsel Shenier.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Ortiz.
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Rivas.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I wanna thank the town manager for, um, for contacting and connecting some residents who had some complaints about letters they've received in regards to some blight, uh, on their properties, and their confusion, and connecting them to the right resources. So I appreciate that, and anyone, you know, that, for has further questions, you know, we wanna make sure that people have the right information, rather than sort of, you know, a lot of misinformation on social media, and making sure that you are going to the town manager and the town, you know, town departments to get information and ask questions about those different issues that people might have. I also wanted to mention that we did meet, uh, the Town Manager Substance Abuse Task Force, and I think some, sometime soon, we'll be having a presentation about some of the ideas and the things that we're working on, and in connection to some of the funding that was received from the opioid settlements. Thirdly, I wanna talk about the community needs assessment. I know that we had a community forum recently, and we're hoping to connect more of that information to be disseminated to a broader, um, group of residents and citizens across our, our, you know, our different towns that were covered in the assessment. So I will be giving that information to some subcommittee chairs, uh, because they would like to have some presentations about that assessment and that, about the, that information. I also wanna mention, I visited Trade Wins Program the other day to talk to some of the club members about, you know, just, uh, volunteering and, and participating in different town, um, activities or boards and committees, and some of the projects that are happening in town, and they were very grateful, they, the director there, they have some new programs coming online, and would like to connect and present that to the town council, so that residents in our town know what, what programs are being, uh, done out of there. They have like a gym, they have a, a huge location, I didn't realize how big their location was, but there, there was quite a, a group of people that attend the clubhouse, and, uh, are really, um, excited about some of the projects that we have come, going on in town, but they would like to share some of the things that they do there at the clubhouse as well. So that's all I have, thank you.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, um, just a couple things. First, uh, I'm very disappointed I was not able to attend, uh, Billy Gibson's retirement party. He has always been a wonderful part of the inspections department, I'm very sad to see him go, uh, but he's been here for quite a long time, and, uh, I'm glad that he was sent off in, in a great, uh, manner, because he's one of the best. Um, the only other thing that I want to say is the rez, uh, thank you so much again for the rez to be open another week. It's too bad that it was not open on Saturday because of that pesky rain we had Friday night, but, uh, we're still able to take my stepdaughter to Auburn, where she learned how to skate along the, holding on to the rails, so if, uh, the rez is open again this weekend, with all that open ice, maybe, uh, she'll be able to enjoy that once before the season really starts to end, though the groundhog did see his shadow, so maybe there's six more weeks of winter. But that's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
We want to end item number 19, discussion next meeting day. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is the town council meeting Monday, February 24th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
In adjournment, there's a motion by, uh, Dow, seconded by Shenier, all in favor, opposed, meaning adjourned.